I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. President Rudy Garcia will lead us. Please come forward, make sure the light is on and the mic is ready, and then proceed.
Hi. Good afternoon. Rudy Garcia with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Thank you for having me here. Our dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be here this evening as we commence this Clay County Commissioners Business Meeting and grateful for these leaders who sacrificed their time and their talents and their efforts to lead and guide this part of Thy Vineyard. We're grateful for their sacrifices, for their good hearts and their desire to serve and to support the community in which we live in. Dear Father, we pray that the proceedings this evening will be inspired, that decisions will be made that will be according to Thy will and the needs of the area and the members who live in this great community. We're grateful for all those who live here, for the businesses, for the schools and the religious organizations that are in the area. Please, we pray that Thou will bless each of the those that live in the area, that they will feel Thy love and be grateful for the blessings that they have. Again, we pray for inspiration and guidance as we proceed through this meeting this evening, and we humbly ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Here.
Next item on this evening's agenda is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, you are recognized to close. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Us.
Motion passes six zero.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment to the commission on any issues of importance to them? Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on the agenda this evening under consent. The first item is approval of the minutes from the July 25 Business Meeting and Resolution 2024-226 is approving the invoice payments from July 27 to August 2. There are 175 invoices that total $299,504.87.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments related to the consent agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Us.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to the evening's regular agenda. There is one item on the evening's regular agenda that is 2024-227. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-227 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from July 27 to August 2. There are 12 invoices totaling $9,255.59.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-227.
A motion has been made for the approval of 2024-227. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Us.
Motion passes five in favor, one recusal.
That brings us to discussion items. We have two discussion items on this evening's agenda. The first one being Chapter 90, Parks Updates. Administrator?
Yes, as the commission may recall, a couple of weeks ago, our interim Parks Director presented to the commission another lengthy report on recommended changes and additions to Chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances for Clay County. There was some discussion, great feedback by the commission, and so Director Davis is here again this evening to recap some of the information that we're recommending to change based upon the conversation that the commission had at the last meeting.
Thank you. Please proceed.
John Davis, interim Parks Director, and I go through one ordinance, or we'll go through one ordinance tonight, and that's 90.28, and that's page 34 and 35 of your packet, just to get to that. Last week, or last time we discussed, there was some questions over the curfew ordinance, and after some discussions with the sheriff's office, we've come to a conclusion to scrap that and incorporate it more into park closings. The park closings is basically an all or nothing. If we close the area, all ages, hour restrictions. So 90.28 would cover that, park closings. We did add that the county administrator and Parks Director have authority to establish hours and close certain areas, and it also by simply posting of signs with those such hours as we need to do. We also did add a section that the sheriff, the fire chief, or an emergency management director in an emergency may temporarily close a designated area or portion of a designated area when necessitated by public health or public safety reasons. And that's basically the changes. I can go through everything else if you want to again, or if you have questions on this.
Are there any questions from the commissioners either on what was just the section just covered or any other part of this chapter? Seeing none, you're just looking for consensus that we are approving of the of this chapter change?
Correct. We'd like some direction from the commission if you would like us to bring back Chapter 90 with these revisions from the previous draft for your consideration for adoption at the next meeting.
Okay. That being said, if there are no questions for discussion, is there consensus to move forward on that? Seeing a lot of head nods and thumbs up, nobody has any concerns at this moment to express? All right, well, it sounds like we have consensus, so thank you very much for the presentation. Next item on discussion would be update on senior tax relief program. Administrator?
Yes, as the commission is aware, the county commission adopted an ordinance late last year for the county's senior real estate property tax credit program. The governor did sign a bill just recently that did do some clarifications regarding that, so we will be coming back to you all with some recommended changes to our ordinance so that we're in compliance with that. But we wanted to take the opportunity this evening. Administrative Services Officer Jacobs is here to give you an overview not only of those changes and what you might see in the changes to the ordinance coming forward, but also what staff's been doing and working on and what the plan is to roll out this for our senior property owners in January.
Please proceed.
Good evening. Deanna Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. The senior real estate tax, property tax credit program, I don't know why I can't say that, I type it 100 times a day. A brief overview, as county administrator indicated, the original bill was signed in July of 2023. This commission adopted the ordinance in November of '23, and at that point, staff began working on how we could make this work and get it implemented. In July of '24, the governor signed Senate Bill 756 that modified portions of the current law, which, as the administrator indicated, will require some modifications. The changes to the current law indicate that you no longer have to have a Social Security retirement eligibility. The base year does not predate the adoption of the program. Counties have expressed authority to adopt reasonable procedures to carry out the purpose and intent. We cannot limit, counties cannot limit the definition of or scope of eligible credit amount or eligible taxpayer, such as a cap on the assessed value or income. And an adopted ordinance does not preclude it from being amended or superseded by petition. Those are some of the new things that don't really impact our current ordinance. However, these new items do. And that would be that if the tax liability declines below that of the base year, the lower amount will become the new base year from that time forward. Our ordinance indicates that it will go down, but it will come back up to the original base year. The base year shall be increased to reflect real property tax liability attributable to new construction and improvements, only the incremental amount that changes the assessed value. The assessor's really excited about that part. The property, if the property is annexed into a taxing jurisdiction which they did not owe real property on their base year, then the base year will be increased to reflect that tax liability. All of these items will need to be adjusted in our current ordinance. So what's that mean for us? We have to amend the Clay County ordinance to reflect those changes, and we plan to bring that to you on August 22. We've been working with various departments, and Lucas from the assessor's office has been really wonderful in helping us with some of that language. And we need to continue to hone our logistics and the implementation of the program in getting the word out. Big, big obstacles in those things. The first one is finding a company that can actually calculate our taxes accurately and to implement this program. The first year of the program is simple because they're all starting with the same base year. After that, it gets more complicated. We've reached out to our current vendor and some other vendors across the state. No one has actually said they can do it. However, as of yesterday afternoon, we did receive information from the company that would be an increase or improvement, an upgrade to our current. The product, the project cost for that would be 3.8 million. If you include the additional cost of project hosting, first year support, public access hosting, it increases the cost to 4.5 million dollars. And they still can't tell us that they can do the taxes, but they've got a program for us. So we're going to continue to look and push our current vendor to see if they can do what we need them to do and to make all of the individual adjustments that need to be made to the taxes. This is what we envision the tax bills to look like. They will have four columns. One will be the initial taxing liability. The second will be the base year. The third will be the credit, and then the last will be what is actually owed. So we decided that we would bring to you a couple of examples. We pulled two properties. One is in, this one is in the North Kansas City School District. The other one is in the Liberty School District to just give you an example of what a tax bill or a tax credit might look like for an individual. We used real tax years just so there was no question about the amount of the tax that was applied. This, these are numbers from previous years. In this case, the base year is the year prior to the year in which you become eligible, 62 or older, and you apply. That's really important that we make sure that our citizens understand they have to apply for it, for it, for them to be eligible for this and for it to be applied to their taxes. You can see that we have listed out the different agencies that are the taxing jurisdictions. And what's important on this particular one is the two at the bottom. The state tax, which is the blind pension fund, and then the North Kansas City School debt. Both of those are considered constitutionally protected, so they are not eligible for this program. Those two taxes will continue to increase. You can see the difference between the new adjusted balance and what the base year was, from 589 to 674, and 1370 to 1568. These, however, will stay the same, and that's where they're going to get, that's where the individual is going to get their tax break. So if you look at this, you can see that the program eligible taxes are $4,200. The unadjusted tax liability is $4,300, resulting in $159 savings for that year. That is this tax bill. Second example, similarly broken down, you'll see the debt levy and the state tax are not together. I don't want citizens to think that they will be always together. So they may show up other places, but they will say debt levy or the state tax. The base year is 1968. The balance due is 2164. If you look at this, you can see that the eligible taxes are 2164. If they had not been in the program, it'd be 2782, and this person saves $617. So there's going to be a lot of variance in the amount of money that individuals save. And unfortunately, based on the questions that we're getting, there's a lot of confusion about what their tax bill is going to look like. A lot of them believe it is going to be exactly the same as it was in 2024 or their base year because they don't understand that there are, in this case, two taxes, but any debt obligation or the state tax are not eligible for this because they're constitutionally protected, and this is a statute. So that's going to be really important for staff to get the word out on that and try and help people understand it's not going to be exactly the same in all likelihood. How are we going to do that? Any way that we can? We're going to try and get a hold of all of the news, the radio, social media. We're going to shout it. I think we're going to give Commissioner Lawson the megaphone. We are going to various meetings throughout the community, and we are going to send flyers to various churches and organizations throughout the county. If we can find an email, we'll send them a flyer. Post these things at lodges, like an Elks Lodge, or VW Lodge, credit unions, teacher credit unions, law enforcement, or public service credit unions, anywhere that we feel that it might reach persons who would be interested in this program. Here's a list for those at home to see where we're going to be for public presentations. This is just the list that we have at this point in time. If anybody reaches out to us and wants a presentation, we are going to do our best to accommodate that and go out and get, again, get the word out, and hopefully with your assistance. And anyone that would like to join us and help us do that, we'd appreciate it. In addition, we're going to be taking applications on site. We have chosen the senior centers because it is January, February, and March in Missouri, and we don't know what the weather's going to be. And our belief was that a senior center would be best equipped to handle anyone that might have challenges getting in and out of a building or around during that time of the year. This is the flyer. Each of you should have had one at your, at your seat. And this is what we are still working on. There are some minor tweaks that we need to do to it. This is the front. And then as you open it up, the information is on the inside of the eligibility, what documents you might need to apply, where you need to apply, and then directly across from that, the application sites. Now, that's where, how it folds in. If you open it up, then you've got the frequently asked questions, and then a list of presentation sessions or informational sessions that will, are listed there for anybody to attend that would like to. And then the QR code on the back. This is our family of flyers. They're kind of jumbled up there together, but you have an example in front of you. The first one is the little, the little flyer that we hope to put in the tax bills and send out to every household so that, we're trying to reach absolutely everybody. Then you have that one sheet that has the information on the public presentation sessions and the application dates. That's something that could be put on a bulletin board. You don't have to worry about it flipping and turning it over and that kind of thing. And then you have the flyer. So those are our, at this current time, those are our flyers, and we, we will adjust them as necessary as additional things come forward. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I'd like to point out that I think we, as a commission, have done a good job in putting this together, and particularly Commissioner Lawson, who led our task force to put this together, so I want to thank her particularly, but I think all commissioners participated in this, so I think that, I think we can be, I think reasonably proud of the effort we've put forward, and I think we are well-serving our citizens, particularly our seniors, with this program. So with that, Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say you did a hell of a job on this. This, this is, it answers the questions, doesn't go into big hairy detail, but it answers the questions. Think it'll put a lot of people's mind at ease. And the fact that you've already got all of these different dates set up, that's phenomenal. You know, we, too often, government does something, and then they never follow up on it, you know? It just left out there, well, you should have come in, or you should have done it. This is wonderful. I'm highly impressed and real, real pleased with the way you did this. I am. I think you did an exemplary job. One question I did have, though, when we were all sweating bullets and trying to get this thing set up, I thought that our current software company said, "We will be able to do this for you for nothing." Were they just bullying us, or what was the deal?
That does not appear to be the case at this point. It would be 4.5 million because that's what that.
Holy moly. So we're, we're going to have, in order to do all this, and our software and everything that's necessary for it, we're going to be looking at 4.5 mil?
Commissioner, that's only if you choose that company. We are going to explore every other avenue to be able to be a little more cost effective.
Oh, good.
It doesn't seem like it's, it's really cost effective to, to spend money that we could be saving others.
Yeah. Boy, that's, I was so excited when they said, "Oh, we'll do it for nothing." I thought, oh, we're home free. So I should have known, right? But anyway.
Thank you. We can always hope.
Yeah, I will, I will come to every single one of those. I'm just tickled to death that you're, you're doing what you're doing. I appreciate it. Really appreciate you.
Commissioner Wagner, oops, sorry. Commissioner Wagner, there we are. I am sorry. There we are.
Third time's a charm.
I guess.
I, I want to add my voice of thanks. This is a lot of great work that you've done, and I think more work and better work than we've seen out of some other counties that have this very same. But I'm not going to name any of those counties tonight, but do have a couple of questions. One is actually coming off of the question that our fellow commissioner asked, so I did expect there'd be some financial hit to this. But I guess my question is, not, not knowing exactly where that will end up, do we have some idea of a plan of financing that, whether that is one time out of next year's budget, spreading that over years? Don't know until we actually hear back. What's kind of the thought?
Good questions, and we don't know at this point in time. I will tell you right now, I was, I had sticker shock and probably fell out of my chair when Deanna gave me the 4.5 million dollar number. We had anticipated some costs associated with it, but nothing. And, and again, to be clear, the current software that we use, so this isn't just changing our software so that it can, you know, recalculate the relief program, it is, we have to upgrade because, in essence, what we currently have is basically antiquated, and they're wanting us off that platform.
Yeah.
And as we all know, that happens with software quite frequently, but I agree, I think staff is doing their due diligence, reaching out to other counties, saying, "What are you using?" And they are working on a backup plan, Plan B, that it means if we don't have it set up in a new software for next year when we're preparing the tax bills, that we will do it manually.
Yeah.
On those that are eligible for the tax credit.
Bust out some filing cabinets and start filling them full of papers, so. Well, I don't know if along those lines, it's even possible, as you talk to some of these counties, but I wonder if there's a joint RFP opportunity that maybe spreads some of those dollars down?
Right. We may be looking at some kind of short-term financing for this, or, you know, until we pick the actual software and really get down to the nuts and bolts of it, and then we can look at what is the, what are the financial options that we have to, to cover the cost.
Fair enough. Then the only other question, just kind of taking that debt levy question maybe a little bit further. So Kansas City, for example, is in its seventh year of its 20-year bond plan, GeoBond Plan, where it is raising every year. Does that work the same way as the school district's levy example? Because presumptively, they'll raise it, there's another bond that goes out that year. So, so anything that may have been voter approved that would have allowed for some sort of debt issuance, wherever it is, you're still going to pay for those rises, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's our interpretation at this point, yes.
Okay, that's, that's. That's what I would assume, or else we get, or the state gets sued, but that's their problem. But, okay.
Those will all be listed out separate, so you'll be able to see what portion of that is the debt levy?
Yeah, and I guess I would suggest, based on the schedule you've given, and again, I agree, great, a great schedule, as you go, I think it probably makes some sense to the degree that you can individualize those sorts of things to whatever community that you're in. So if you're in Kansas City, you've got to deal with this, but if you're in Liberty, you're going to deal with this. I, I think, you know, that's, that may, that may be a little bit of extra hand-holding, but I think it's probably worth doing so that people understand, to your point, that things just don't freeze, and you don't have to worry about them again. Life goes on, and those obligations go on, so, anyway. Wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thanks, yeah. No, no questions, just wanted to say thanks as well, and not just for today, but, and the pamphlet's great. But going all the way back to the beginning of this process, you know, there's been a lot of complexities and ambiguities from the beginning, and just want to express my gratitude to you for helping us navigate all of those over the last year. And I know there are more ahead with the implementation, all the logistical pieces of that. So thank you for, for. to you for helping us navigate all of those over the last year. And I know there are more ahead with the implementation, all the logistical pieces of that. So thank you for, for all your work on it. I know it's been complicated. Thanks.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you also, and I'll help share this on social media and everything, and just want to say thank you for your leadership on this, Joanne. If it wasn't for you, we had some commissioners who wanted us to sign a letter of intent, so. If it weren't for you, we wouldn't have got this done, so appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I would like to say that this is, this is not my product. This is the product of your staff. This is the product of the clerk, and the collector, and the assessor, and the media team. It's definitely a team effort. This would never have come together without the team that you have before you, both here and at home.
I did have a couple of other questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, sorry.
One of them is, if someone improves their property substantially, then that will trigger another event. Would that, in any increase, would that be based on the increment of what the improvement was and not the overall value of the property, or how would that work?
The law indicates it would be based on the incremental improvement, and that would be added to the base year. However, there's some logistics on trying to figure out how that would happen.
Yeah, it seemed like kind of a complicated question. I knew that, the spirit of it obviously tells us where I believe we need to go, but then putting that into practical effect is a little more tricky. Administrator?
So, so one of the things, working with the assessor and the, and the team that Deanna mentioned, is, you know, the statute really didn't define what, construction. And so we believe the intent is, if somebody does something to their property because they have to put up a ramp, or making it accessible, and are doing some new construction from that perspective, you know, we, we believe that, that shouldn't adjust, right, the value. However, we're kicking around the idea that if, if the addition, the new construction is 100 square feet or greater added on to the home, then that would be our, our threshold that you would have to basically add on a room. Now, we're still working through the logistics on that, on what that looks like.
Okay. I, I agree totally about the, any improvements that increase mobility because of, you know, inability to actually access it, so sort of Americans with disabilities kinds of issues. The other, we talked about the cost of the software. Do we have any kind of handle on what the ongoing cost would be? Clearly, they would be much less. And we are, you know, going to be exploring other options, but do we have any just sort of general idea of what the annual maintenance of that software might also include? I mean, like I say, I realize that it's going to go back out for review, and you don't necessarily have that information, but I assume there will be some additional costs that we need to, to be aware of.
They did indicate in their email that it would, they would keep the maintenance cost at $195,000 for the first five years. I don't know if there were additional costs that would be associated with that on a yearly basis.
And we, you know, again, doing cost benefit analysis, we, I'm sure we pay maintenance now for the existing software. So really, what's the delta, the increase on the annual cost versus what we've been paying? And we'll, you know, we'll bring all that to you once we have a final recommendation so you have a full financial picture of what this is going to look like.
And I assume that would be the case. I just wanted to bring it up so that we would all have it, have an awareness of that. Are there any more questions or comments on this issue? Seeing none. That would conclude, where are we at? There we are. I would conclude this part of the discussion. So that moves us on to the auditors, excuse me, on the reports, auditors cash basis. Administrator?
Yes, included in your agenda packet is the auditor's cash basis monthly report as of the end of July. So certainly, if you have any questions about that information, please reach out to the auditor.
That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just a couple of items. First of all, the county is taking applications online. You can go to the county's website at www.claycountymo.gov. We are opening up for registration for the next citizen academy that will be kicking off this fall. And so I encourage any citizen that is interested in participating, please go to our website and fill out the application. The county is also taking applications. We have vacancies on two boards, the tourism board and also the domestic violence board. And so if anyone is listening and is interested, there's information on our website about those boards, and if they would like to be considered for that, you know, please go and fill out the application. And then finally, I know Commissioner Nolte is looking for a commissioner that might be interested in serving on the EDC's Midwest Small Business Board, and so if you are interested in filling that position on the EDC board, please let Commissioner Nolte know. And finally, the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, August the 15th, at 6:00 here in the chambers.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, we'll start with you if you don't mind. Very well. Commissioner Lawson?
I can't.
Oop, hold on a second, let me get back there. There we are.
I had to say something, you know? No, I do want to have a shout out. Carney has just named a new police chief. His name is Mark Thomas, and Mark has been kind of filling in since March, but they have gone ahead and I think Mayor Pogue put forth that name, and the alderman agreed with that. And he's a gentleman with a lot of experience, and I think he's going to do great for Carney. I remember when we first moved to Carney, there was one policeman, and it was Officer Frank. And man, you didn't mess with him. The kids were scared to death of him. He was, he was a big man, and he just didn't put up with anything. But he kept that place just in line. The kids were good, the town was safe, and so now, looking at it as, as grown and all the officers they have, I, you know, I really commend this gentleman for taking the job on because it's not a small job anymore, but just wanted to give him a pat on the back for getting the job and keeping Carney safe, we hope.
Commissioner Wagner?
Just very quickly, thanks to those that exercised their right to vote earlier this week. Not everybody does it, and not everybody around the world gets the opportunity, so thanks to those who do that. For those who prevailed, congratulations. For those that did not, that's okay, better luck next time. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, I just want to jump on, actually, Commissioner Lawson's comments from last week about the Olympics. I've been enjoying watching the Olympics. I hope everybody has. I ran track in high school, and USA Track and Field is having a banner year, maybe the best in the history of, of the country, so go USA. And in fact, y'all probably saw, we had a local guy, Quincy Hall, from right down the south, I think, won gold in the 400, and I used to run the 400. Not, not as fast as Quincy, but anyway, it's been a great week for America, a great couple of weeks, and going to keep watching, celebrate it. Thanks.
Let's have a couple of things. One is, I do encourage commissioners to, as we have our boards and commission vacancies come up, and they are posted, I do welcome your recommendations, and if you have someone that is, that you've encouraged to put forth their nomination, please let me know so I can make sure that I pull up those. I will be getting those applications, obviously, but if, if there's someone that you're interested in, I certainly welcome the input of commissioners when it comes to making those nominations, so please feel free to reach out to me in that case. I also want to echo what Commissioner Wagner said, and that is, thank you for those who participated in our democratic republic. That is something that Commissioner Wagner rightly pointed out. It is not a universal, is not universally recognized as something that everybody on this planet can do. It just, I think, underscores what a, what an incredibly special country we have, and if you don't participate, I hope that you will consider participating in the next election, be an informed voter, and, and perform your civic duty, because if we, if we don't, I think we are all the, we are the worst for it. I think I remember a quote, that those who don't vote are destined to be ruled by those who, who do. And so please, make sure that your voice is heard. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.